Good evening, and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tuscon for January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. All the meeting to order and join me in the pledge to the flag.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which is safe, one nation, under power, individual with liberty, of struggle.
A couple of announcements. The Sullivan County Mobile DMV is back. It will start January twenty-fifth from ten AM till three thirty PM, and it will be appointment only. Appointments can be made on the Sullivan County DMV site or by calling to DMV in Monticello. Regarding COVID nineteen tests, we had received some COVID nineteen tests from the county. We were allocated forty of them. They have since been gone. We have no further tests. However, we are supposed to have some coming back. You can call the legislature to find out when I would not call the town clerk's office, but I would keep an eye on the town website and the clerk allow the information be put back up when we do receive the test kits. A reminder that the Zoom is not for workshops. Public hearings only until April of twenty twenty-two. They are for the regularly scheduled planning zoning board of appeals zoning update committee and the town board. One point four, we have a presentation by our Tuscon representative for the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway, Josh Felderstein. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? Josh Felderstein, obviously.
You can use the end of the table if you need it, Josh.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Thanks. I represent the town of Tuscon for the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway Committee. Um, so what I'd like to do today is just kind of touch on what the committee is. I know there's some new people here and you know, the meetings vary with who is aware of what the meeting committee does and how long we've been around and how it impacts you and come to our meetings are also available to the public. As you may know, um, the scenic byway, you know, there's the United States has scenic byways across the entire country from here to California. They're kind of a big thing in the US. So they've actually come out with a committee called this National Scenic Byway Foundation. They're a big you know, these kind of organizations represent everybody who's along the byways so they can all go together. You know, get funds, get grants and make improvements and bring tourism to their local areas. So they're really big in the United States and, and you know, the foundations are really large. Um, our committee itself, the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway Committee, it was legislatively designated as a state byway in two thousand and two. And it was around an enhanced concept plan for Route ninety-seven, including Orange and Sullivan and also Delaware Counties. Okay, so we've got a lot of, you have a lot of towns in here that are representing everybody. Um, we do have a vision statement. It's a little lengthy, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut it down a little bit, but basically it discusses how the byway will highlight what is already an exceptional feature of the region's appeal to residents all like, and that is the actual highway itself, basically Route ninety-seven. Um, you know, and we're focusing around its spectacular vistas. Uh, it's access to obviously the Delaware River and also its uniqueness for its community on the byway itself. Okay, so there's a lot of history. There's a lot of things that we want to feature. And so how do we get the tourism and how do we get the people up here? And, and we don't want to silo ourselves per community. We want to actually act as a to get more done. Um, the, the idea here is the economic climate will be enhanced and careful promotion of the byway itself and its resources. And the visitors' experience will be heightened through convenient and attractive facilities. Turnoffs, roads overlooked, vistas, okay, we want to make sure there's restrooms and picnic areas and everything that somebody coming from, you know, mostly the city in a lot of instances coming up here might want to enjoy. Um, you know, the idea behind what we're thinking is visitors, visitors will have an exceptional year-round experience based on abundant lodging, dining and recreational choices available to in the hospitality of the area residents. So that's a, that's like the, the vision statement that we have in a nutshell. I kind of, it was a little bit lengthier, but I'm kind of wanted to cut it down a little bit. In the, when we were opening, there was a traveling ribbon cutting dedication ceremony and it took place along the eleven communities between Port Jervis and Hancock. Okay, so that, that's who's mostly represented here. Um, the byway was, it did achieve incorporation of a five oh one C three organization in two thousand and three. And a volunteer committee of representatives was appointed by the municipalities and bylaws were adopted. And that's, you know, I'm representing now, but we have had other representatives of many, many years. Um, this is kind of impressive. To date, the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway Committee has secured over nine nine thousand dollars in county, state and federal grant fund. I'm gonna touch on the, the grants a little bit later because it's something that I think we should all be aware of and the money's I think that that's the important thing here. So I'm gonna rattle off a few of our accomplishments, just to give you an idea that we're getting stuff done. And, and as in its collectively, so it's a lot of communities coming together. I think it's kind of impressive. You know, for byways. Um, we did sponsor a free one-day business conference called ninety-seven reasons to meet on the byway in Calhoun. Okay. The Saint Lawrence Seaway Trail Executive Theresa Mitchell offered tips on tourism marketing and opportunities, and she was a keynote speaker. Okay, we did design and create route markers along the highway featuring the UDSBC logo and we collaborated at the New York State Department of Transportation on that. So we do have access to the DOT. Um, we began distributing a hundred thousand copies of a twenty-page full-color Meet Us on the Byway brochure. Okay. Um, we created an interactive website. This is great. I think everybody at some point should log into the website, Upper Delaware Scenic Byway.org. Okay. Um, if you just Google Upper Delaware Scenic Byway, it'll, the, the site will come up itself. That was launched in two thousand and seven, and then it was upgraded at a later date and it has a mobile responsive platform for mapping capabilities. So it's nice because there's people down, you know, in the city or anywhere want to come up, they can kind of map out planned, again encompassing all the different towns and, you know, not just one single town itself. Uh, we also have a hotline, eight six six five one one UDSB. Okay. And that is basic to accept and fulfill by way information and brochure requests. Um, a fifteen thousand dollar federal grant project was created to copyright a map for the UDSBC and produce a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar promotional placemats. Um, we also had a phase one of a fifty thousand dollar Route ninety-seven landscape enhancement project. Okay, and that was clearing of five sites along the byway to open up some of the vistas. So when I get to talk about grants later on, just keep in mind that if, if you know of an area, whether it's public or private and the person private wants to be involved or whatever the case is and you feel it may be a vista, these are the type of grants, you know, maybe something's growing there and we need to cut down some trees or something, those, those types of grants are available. Okay, the Federal Highway Admission Administration approved about sixteen thousand dollar federal grant application for the UDSBC for the invasive plant species educational campaign and interpretive signage project. So there was eight four-by-two-foot custom outdoor interpretive panels they designed installed on each byway community. And a brochure was created and public seminars held on spread the word, not the weed. And the bat, that was the battle for the, the not weed. I think everybody may have seen that. It was, there was in a few different communities, but obviously there's a not weed problem. Uh, they have run ads, you know, paid for and run ads in AAA, Car and Travel Magazine. Um, I love New York radio broadcasts. Uh, there's also been some stuff on ten-ten wins. Okay. Um, the UDS, we won, um, a, the twenty thirteen Sullivan County and Cultural Assistance Matching Grant to produce logo stickers and magnets that were passed out along the community. Utilizing a five thousand dollar grant for the town of Lumberlin. We retained Fair Weather Consulting and New Pulse to produce an estimate of tourism visitation to the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway, which provides an impact analysis identifying potential economic opportunities. This is interesting. The study was completed in twenty fourteen and it found that an average of two hundred and eighty-three thousand leisure visitors come up for the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway recreational activities generating seventeen million. I can only imagine if that's twenty fourteen where we are now, you know, everybody's coming up at this point. Um, we, uh, the Upper Delaware Panel participated in the National Trust for Historic Preservation called This Place Matters. It was a campaign in twenty fifteen encouraging people to share stories and photo spotlighting their favorite sites on Route ninety-seven. Um, the town of Highland received a forty-five hundred dollar grant working with a scenic byway for the monarch butterfly fostering the flyway by the byway. It was a sixteen-panel piece to educate and inspire people to revitalize and pollinate your species. I think everybody may remember that as well, the monarch butterfly, you know, mostly coming out of like Berryville. Um, the, we, we also co-sponsored the Berryville Butterfly Bike Ride. Okay, also a big deal. Um, the Sullivan County Legislature awarded twenty thousand dollars and then another twenty-five for discretionary contracts. Funding program to invest in scenic vistas, and that's where I'm talking about those grants. If you know of a possible scenic vista or something that you feel is viewing the, the river, let us know and we can see, you know, work with you on getting that grant. Um, they also collected, allocated five thousand offering morning butterfly habitat program. They did biodegradable litter bags with the Upper Delaware logo on it. Um, a non-matching grant program to facilitate, facilitate enhancing scenic vistas offering financial assistance to public and private owners, and that, that's what I was just talking about now. And then we do provide advocacy for maintenance and updates for the bridges. Okay. Uh, and the highways. So, you know, for an example, repairs or frequent damages or vandalism to the hawk's nest. We've been, in many of our meetings, we'll discuss what's going on and we'll contact the DOT and we'll see how things can better, be better in that situation. A lot of tickets have been given out or there was vandalism around that area. Um, the committee worked with its representative from the DOT for new plan sign, signages along the highway to show, to identify attractions and historic sites. Okay. Um, they offered in twenty eighteen, they offered a presentation called the Value Preserving Scenic Views. Um, and that was at the Narrowsburg Union. And then, um, the other thing that kind of stood out is they had a fourth competitive a grant program, culture and history along the byway. And that was introduced in September twenty twenty-one to celebrate the rich historical cultural significance of the byway. Again, big deal, you know, people forget about the history and, you know, this is something that everybody can learn about and a lot of people want to come up and visit.
Can you say that again? I didn't hear that.
Sure, sure. There was a fourth competitive grant program where the culture and his called the culture and history along the byway. And it was introduced in September of twenty twenty-one of this year. And that was to celebrate the rich historical, you know, cultural significance of the byway.
I didn't see that.
Yeah. Um, some of the things we're currently working on now, this is, um, you know, basically anti-litter signs placed along the byway. They're also going to be doing some, a pilot program around some solar powered trash compactors. Okay. The big deal here is the, the, the compactor units were enhanced with Wi-Fi potentially. We're working on that right now. But that's kind of a big deal because it's a hotspot. So, you know, it's, it's a big deal for maybe emergency situations. There's not, you know, like if you're along the river and you're, and, and one of these compactors is nearby and there's a situation, you'll be able to access it and get some Wi-Fi and potential phone call. Okay. Or it just may be visitors themselves. They may go on the website and be aware that the, um, the compactors have Wi-Fi and they realize they need a hotspot upon driving down the highway and something they don't have access to in the area where there is bad cell service. Um, here's the other big one. This is all in its early stages, but New York Senator John Bonasik secured a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar member line item in two thousand and seven budget for capital construction potentially of an Upper Delaware Scenic Byway Visitor Center. Okay. Uh, they allocated a twenty-five thousand dollar state grant to a feasibility study and design concept potentially locate the facility at Fort Delaware. Um, or also they were exploring the Calicoon Depot. So everything's in its beginning stages on that. Um, nothing that's been, you know, allocated at this point, but discussions are around. It would be a great opportunity. Uh, you know, that's some great money to come from the state. Um, one thing they would do in regard with that is they did submit county and state funding proposal to establish an executive director position. So that would be somebody, you know, what, what, what happens a lot of times with these positions, you're probably aware, is that, you know, people can't dedicate a lot of time and, you know, every month is when they restart thinking about it again because they got another meeting coming up. It's like a crunch to see what I did. So the idea of getting somebody directly in that position and have the opportunity to actually move things forward a lot quicker and have somebody dedicated and have some, you know, you know, play in the game, you know, they're, they're more invested in the product itself. Okay. Um, couple of quick recognitions that we have gotten over the last few years. We were publicly voted, uh, the River Reporters Readers Choice Survey in two thousand and four. Um, in two thousand and eight, the Department of Transportation, New York State, selected the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway as the host site for a model by, byway signage initiative. It demonstrate design standards included in New York State Byway signage manual. Okay. In twenty fifteen's USA Today, travel experts selected the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway among twenty finalists in New York State highways. Um, the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway is featured prominently in National Geographic Scenic Wild Delaware River Map Guide. And, uh, it was launched in May of twenty sixteen. Car and Travel, AAA Magazine deemed the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway among the Europe's best scenic drives in twenty fourteen, I think that was. And, um, our organization itself, we meet, uh, once a month and it's, it's the fourth Monday. Okay, at seven PM. And, um, it, it, they usually change the site on where we meet because it might be like, might be Calicoon or, you know, but you know, we'll, we'll be able to fill you in on that. And, um, there is an Upper Delaware Council Office across the street on Bridge Street and all meetings are open to the public. Okay. And then also, um, you know, I, I suggest you might want to go onto the, uh, the website. You know, check it out and see what it has to offer. And if you have a business, you may be able to even get some information on that. Um, now I'm just going to touch real quick on the grants that are out there right now. And, and if you, you know, there's a lot of money out there. So if there's other things that you have grants for, then, you know, by all means. Um, they're fostering, there's one grant fostering the flyway on the byway. The Delaware River serves as a flyway for annual migration or north-eastern monarch. Okay, um, the Upper Delaware is saying challenges organizations to help us mission by promoting the habitat through programs, events and education. Okay, and you can apply for up to a fifteen hundred dollars with awards for single projects. And then, um, generally they seem to be around five hundred dollars, but you can apply for up to fifteen hundred for that. We also have what I touched on a little earlier, which was the Vista Enhancement Grants. And, uh, owners of private and public properties along the designated Route ninety-seven scenic byway would benefit from selective vegetative clearing to restore improved traveler's view of the Upper Delaware River. And, um, you know, basically that is any work planned with the New York State Department of Transportation and Department of Environmental Conservation rights away must be approved by that agency. But we, we have access to all that, so we can make that happen as well. So if you see a Vista Enhancement that you think is worth your time, you know, let us know. Um, also culture and history along the byway. Another grant will be awarded for products and events that promote the rich and cultural history associated with New York State Route ninety-seven. Funding initiatives must have a focus that support the state designated byway mission and uh, activities will be open to everyone. Um, the, the entries can apply for up to the fifteen hundred for that as well. And then there's just signage along the byway. If you felt that there were, you know, some of them are like simple, it's like some of them say it's the byway, some of them say there's something historic. Someone say, don't litter, whatever you think might be relevant to the area. Um, so businesses and nonprofit offices that are considered new or refurbished signage along the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway may seek up to five hundred in matching funds for the signs located around Route ninety-seven. So if any of these grants are of interest to you, I suggest you go onto the website. You can also, um, call the, uh, the numbers on the website, the eight six six five one UDSB. And primarily, these are projects located off of ninety-seven, uh, within one of the, the towns, you know, that we talked about between, uh, Port Juris and Hancock. And, um, you know, the grants are awarded in a rolling deadline, so applications must be submitted by the third Monday of the month and will be reviewed, uh, on the fourth Monday. So I, I'm sorry I rattled and there's a lot of information, but I sort of.
I have a, a quick question. In the past, the scenic byway had some lectures, lecturers open to the public. Ed McMahon was a great one that I went to, and I wondered if there's any plans for anything else coming up.
Nothing off the top of my head from any of the meetings we've had recently, but, um, I'll, I'll, I'll ask about it.
Yeah, because that was really very worthwhile for all elected officials. It was a great lecture.
Yeah, no, I saw that on the list.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Josh.
One point five for the payment of bills. General fund dispersed seventy-one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. Highway dispersed seventy, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Water, eleven thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Sewer, eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-six cents for a total of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. Uh, the large general increase that was the insurance was paid, which was forty-nine thousand dollars. Greg and Jane did the bills. Any questions?
No, it all looked good. I move that we pay the bills as submitted.
I have a motion to pay the bills. A second. I'll second it. All in favor? I opposed. Division reports. Highway used six hundred and sixty gallons of diesel fuel. Five hundred and ninety-eight was for highway. Sixty-one was for non-highway use. They used a hundred and sixty-eight gallons of gas. And that was for non-highway use. They patched holes on dirt paved roads. They removed trees in the roadway. I'm swamp pond, Perry Pond, Gables, Kuscheckton, Turnpike and New Wyden Road. They made sand and salt mixture for the winter. They repaired to wash out swamp pond, Hankins Brook and Walls Pond. Put all summer equipment away for the winter to get the remaining trucks ready for the winter. They're out for slippery road conditions several times. The water and sewer monthly report for December. Completed the monthly drinking water and wastewater sampling and reporting. They took fluorine samples from several different locations in the district. Made adjustments to the chlorinator sewer plan as needed to maintain federal and state standards on F for wastewater. Did water meter readings every Wednesday in the month of December. Attended a class provided by the New York Rural Water Association for Sewer Apprenticeship. Overlying pumped out sludge from dosing tanks. They replaced the fabric around sand bed number three. They found several large water leaks and service lines. Assisted contractors where possible to get the leads fixed. We started using a new GPS unit to mark water lines at well number three, valves and distribution boxes at the sewer plant. Several manholes at well one and several sewer cleanouts, including two that were in the wooded easement between ninety-seven and Kirk Road. They dug up two septic tanks, installed two new risers on one and four septic tanks pumped, inspected pump and grinder stations, found one pump station not working, determined the pump was bad and tripped the electrical panel. Overline helped replace a broken sewer pump, plumbing and a bad flooded house on Bridge Street that one homeowner know about a high water use. They responded to one New York Dig Safe Markout Request. For the Building Department and Code Enforcement. Twenty twenty-one Annual Report. They did construction inspections of two hundred and sixteen. They had two fire and safety inspections. They had four complaint inspections. They had nine certificate of occupancies. Had eighty-nine certificate of compliances. They issued a hundred and forty-four permits. They issued a hundred and forty-three in nineteen, a hundred and thirty-two in twenty twenty. They had two additions, seven accessory building and garage. They had seventeen alterations renovations. They had seven camping. Four chimney and solid fuel, four commercial new uh, accessory buildings, four commercial alterations renovations. Two commercial decks, eight decks, five demolitions, ten driveway permits, sixteen electrical geothermal units. Five logging permits, seven mechanical fuel tank abatements. Nineteen new homes. This was up in twenty nineteen, there was nine and twenty twenty, there was eight. Some more homes this year than the previous two. Six pool permits, one renewal, fourteen roofs residential, commercial. Six septic tank permits, one sidewalk, one solar permit, three wells. They performed one hundred and forty-one municipal searches. They did eighty-one searches in twenty nineteen. They did a hundred and one in twenty twenty. They did two floodplain permits. They had three complaint violation notices. Money's collected by the office between January one of twenty twenty-one, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. Was fifty thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and forty-four cents. The amount for twenty twenty was thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and ninety cents. And twenty nineteen was forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty cents.
See, let me ask what a visible search is.
Those are searches that, uh, Ken, you can correct me if I am wrong. They're done in order to promote the sale of a house.
Yeah, usually what happens is when people order title insurance, they do what's called a departmental search and they get a, a letter from the, our building department, which notifies them that there are either are or aren't any open violations with the property and that the property either has occupancy or predates the requirements for that. Might also indicate whether the property is on a public highway. We get a fee for that.
The assessors report for December, the address bank code and new deeds were processed for the second submission before the printing of the January tax bills. Deeds have been slow recently. Some force exemption commitments have been being received. By executive order, the governor has given the option to not do personal renewals of the aged exemptions for twenty twenty-two and carry forth with those already on. Since I no longer review the income for the enhanced start exemption, I have not seen those taxpayers who may have become eligible for the age exemption due to change in their income. Therefore, the number of aged exemptions is now about half of what it was three years ago. Currently only twenty-one households are in the program. I forwarded this information to Ben for the town board resolution due to the fact that any seniors apply in person. I am asking that we exercise this option for the protection of both the seniors and our office staff. I attended the Sullivan County Assessors Association meeting in Mahegan Lake during December. Tax challenges seem to be at an all-time slow pace with some towns still having not received some case notices. We had no personal challenges and have not been affected. Zoom from the Upper Delaware Council.
I can't unmute. Hello.
You're unmuted too.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, um, just to let you know, guys, my agenda, what I'm looking at here stopped at water and sewer. So I don't know what that's about, but I'm, I was happy to have an agenda to follow. So Upper Delaware Council, we elected new officers for twenty twenty-two. Um, Andy Boyer will be the chair and Aaron Robinson from Shaola will be the vice chair and Al Henry is always the secretary. There was a presentation by the DRBC on microplastics in the Delaware River Basin, and they're more prevalent in the lower basin, but they exist here as well. So, uh, so anyway, Andy Boyer gave a brief recap of twenty twenty-one and then we started looking into twenty twenty-two, which brings us to the second annual litter sweep. And this was a really successful effort last year. It coordinates with the traditional litter pluck that we Sullivan County has been sponsoring. And so anything that we is collected is accepted for free in Sullivan County. And, um, And, um, there, we don't have any grant funding, however, this year. So we're looking at partners such as the scenic byway, which I believe helped out a lot the last litter pluck, litter sweep. Yes, I'm, I'm pretty sure that was true. So, um, it will start on Earth Day, Friday, April 22. And we're looking for sponsorships, partners and litter leaders, which Evan Padua did last year. I don't know who else was involved, but everybody did a wonderful job. It was a really amazing effort. I mean, this is 73 miles of river accesses that are subject to be cleaned up. And if you look around, you can see that all the trash is back. You know, we haven't had a lot of snow cover and you can see that. Um, so anybody that wants to help out with that is very welcome. Just go over and sign up with Ashley or none. We don't have a formal literal leader for Tustin at this point, so. But you could absolutely contact me or Evan Padua. The next thing is our long-term fiscal sustainability plan. And that was funded by the grant from Pennsylvania that we got two years ago. And, um, it's a big deal. It's where do we go from here? And if we don't make certain changes, uh, the future is not good. So we're gonna, um, all read the report, attend a roundtable discussion, probably at the Narrowsburg Union. Not sure of the date at this point and discuss the long and the short term changes that have to be made. The representatives that we have, both State of New York and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have offered to help out in terms of what changes could we make that facilitate more grants to be received? Grants are the future for that organization, for, for the UDC. The DRBC's proposed rulemaking, we approved a letter on that. We also approved a comment letter on the Mylanville Skinner's Falls Bridge. And it is such a, it's not in the town of Tustin, but in terms of a cultural, historic, beautiful, incredibly important structure. And of course Skinner's Falls being a incredibly used place for, for recreation, for tourist recreation. It's really important to see if we can save that bridge and have it rehabilitated, put, put into use as a one lane bridge and be the cultural and historic resource that it is, continue to exist for that. So I believe the byway has commented favorably on that strategy. So has NPS and the UDC just recently put a letter out specifically in response to the study that Penn Dot did, which ignored, uh, and their, their summary of their study ignored what all the people who called in and attended from the community were saying. So I think they just need to hear it again. Um, and you can certainly refer to the UDC's letter, which is on our website, upperdelawarecouncil.org. All the information you could possibly need to make a comment is there. You could choose any paragraph. Put your own information, create your own spin, your own feelings, express them. And that's, um, would be a great thing to do for us. And where are we? Oh, DEC with the annual tree and shrubs, seedling sale, which I believe are free if you plant them in New York, but you could go to the DEC's website. And then the park service, the only thing we, there wasn't much happening there. Cody Hendricks dad passed away, so he is the land use specialist for, for them. And, uh, so everybody was kind of, uh, you know, sending him their good wishes. And Laura, the only other thing I can think of to say is that Lauren Hopman, who's working remotely as their, his, uh, NPS's historical and cultural person, um, has moved out west. It's likely they'll need a replacement, but I don't believe they posted that position at, at this time. She's still doing it from, from wherever she lives. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Zoo.
You're very welcome.
Brandy, Energy Committee, anything?
Um, unmute me. Am I unmuted? I am. Um, I, I don't have a report because we didn't have a meeting this month because of the holidays. But, um, I just wanted to, I just found out that, um, Kevin and Greg are now on the committee and I wanted to welcome you guys and, and look forward to working with you. That's about it. I, we went over 19,000 pounds of soft plastic. Goodbye.
Thank you, Brandy. Zoning update, any?
Uh, well, the zoning update committee continues to meet twice a month and we're working on that.
You know, Seguina Grants.
Okay, grants. The first thing is the Little Lake Erie Culvert project is proceeding, believe it or not. The right of way process, which has been a very long process, is near the end. And once that's completed, that we get the, everybody to agree and then contract sign. There are a few other steps and then we go out to the, the UDC grant for the zoning update is on target because the committee is continuing to meet two times per month. That's the second and the first and the third Tuesday at two o'clock. The water system upgrade. We continue to seek external grant funding for the water district. Greg and I had a Zoom meeting with Congressman Delgado's office for two reasons, to make sure that the congressman was aware of our need for funding for that project and to learn of available grants. For the most part, we were told that money will be available, but it hasn't been filtered down to, um, to their office as to how much money. I spoke, I was, this was my favorite part, number four. I spoke with USDA representative for our area with reference to REIT zones. And, um, she said that there undoubtedly will be funding for water systems through the REIT zone. Again, they haven't gotten the final number from the federal government as to how much is allocated to the REIT zones. But, um, we're encouraged at the prospect of those available funds.
Dana, REIT is what? What's that acronym?
What?
What does REIT mean? What are those?
It's, uh, there are only Congressman Hinchey back 25 years ago, maybe. He, um, was able to get Sullivan County and the Worsing in one of, I think there's only five zones in the country. And it's a zone that is, um, identified by the USDA as being rural, where indeed. And so there's extra money that goes just to people in the zones. So, um, we're hoping to get that.
And the acronym REIT stands for Rural Energy for America Program.
There you go. Rural.
I knew there was a rural.
Yeah, I always think it's economic, but it's energy. Um, number five, I'm going to ask the town board if we can apply for two Sullivan Renaissance grants. One for technical assistance grant for a landscape architect to design plantings for Parker Road to make it nicer and more inviting. And also then a municipal partnership grant to purchase the plant material according to the plan. And, um, I've spoken to representatives from Narrowsburg Beautification Group. And, um, they've told me what their desires are for Renaissance grants this year, so we can lump it together and work together. And that'll make a stronger grant application. Also, by the way, I spoke with Brandy because, um, the Energy Committee gets new benches from the Trex Organization. Every six months, I think it is, provided that we submit 500 pounds, which seems to be pretty easy the way Brandy collects this and we save it. So, um, Brandy said she'd put it in the back of her hat, uh, in the back of her head, and maybe we can get benches along Kirk Road for when people walk up and get exhausted like people like me. And, oh, this, yeah. After a long and demanding search for appropriate documentation, we were awarded the funds to have a historic marker made to recognize the old lava schoolhouse on the corner of Parker Road and 52. And this funding comes from the William Pomeroy Foundation. And that wasn't easy to do. There are sticklers, so I'm very happy about that.
That was a lot of work.
Yeah. It was. And wait till you see the marker. You didn't know, I bet you, that the lava schoolhouse served as the meeting house for the lava fire department in 1938 to 52. And it was also an observation post for World War II. They watched out for the planes coming home. You'll see it on the.
I never heard that before.
That's history for.
Closer to 97 or closer to 25?
No, it's 52.
25.
52 and Parker, which is just this side of your road.
Yeah, but Parker goes in a.
Yeah, it hits it twice.
Yeah, it's the one closest to your.
Yeah. So is that the White House that was just renovated?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Any questions for Jane and Grant? If not, I am going to open up the floor to public comments before we walk into old business. On the floor. You have any comment from gallery? Yes.
Actually stand over at the table there, that'd be great.
Frankie Ochoa, I'm Nico's partner. And I want to start my comments with an apology to Supervisor Johnson. I understand that the town is in a tough position. And I believe there are some hard feelings.
Can you speak up Frankie, please?
Sure. So, and I mean that sincerely, I'm sorry. That's not as big. Uh, it appears to me that Johnson, as well as influential constituents, believe that Nico's letter cost them, uh, the election. During public comment, after Nico's letter went out, Ned Lang said, "I just want to put the town on notice that this man, being Nico, has put this town in a very rough position and should be removed from the zoning board as a chairman." Okay, so I understand why Supervisor Johnson engineered and delivered a symbolic act of retribution for appointing, by appointing a new chairperson. Despite the fact this is a very awkward situation for the zoning board members, where your town volunteers, not to mention the new zoning board chair, who certainly deserves a much better and friendlier welcome than this. Not to mention the applicant here is mid-process. But, okay, sure. Get it? So I just want to point out that I think overall there is a misunderstanding. Nico's letter didn't cause the supervisors running mates to lose the election. Nico's letter simply exposed what has been going on for the past few years to voters. Things the town was very aware of and did nothing about. So rather than shoot the messenger, perhaps a look at what these things are, right? And some resolution to act on them might be a better way forward. I believe that the removal of Nico from the position of chair sets a dangerous precedent. If other residents shine a light on the murky manipulations of their town, will they also be shot down? After the letter was sent out, the town did more in three days than it had accomplished in three years in regards to the occupation of town property on Cackle Town Road, but there remains quite a bit to do. The wetland was destroyed for a reason, wasn't accidental. And if we leave it to the current owners or partial owners, I should say, uh, I don't think anything is going to change. So I ask the new board to consider whether or not they will take action to restore this wetland and end the continued occupation of the town's culverts. If the town board decides not to, to take the action, not to do anything, right? There's still other issues that need to be considered. Little Lake Erie is one, right? The last heavy rainfall, we saw unprecedented flooding and damage to property. The one road which goes in and out of Irish Hill was impassable. That's a result of the Beaver Dam no longer existing. Okay, there's also the issue of fire safety on Cackle Town Road. We know that our hydrant has low water pressure. It used to be that the pond was a reservoir for firefighters, but that pond doesn't exist anymore. So if the town is not going to take action to restore the wetlands, then we need some fire safety thing to happen, right? We need a survey, we need a study, we need to know that our property is protected on Cackle Town Road. And I believe that this should be an item on the town's capital budget if the wetland is not restored. I just want to say that this whole Cackle Town Road process has been unfolding like the most disgusting onion I have ever seen. And it's horrific and I'm really, um, I just, it's like the, the worst soap opera. I don't know what will happen next. But I just want to say that, uh, the situation is not going to go away. Unfortunately, Nico and I are not going to go hide and disappear and never bother you again. Certainly will be here, much to your, I'm sure, joy, right? But this is going to take time. It's going to take concern. It's going to take bravery. And I just want to put it back, uh, at the feet, uh, the table of the new board to say, "I hope that something happens of this and I hope that you, um, do make an action, right? I hope that this situation can be resolved." And I truly hope, uh, success to the new town board in all your endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the floor? Do you have any comment in the gallery?
Mr. Allman would like to make a statement.
Public comment if he wishes to.
Allman, if you could make a comment, please direct it to the town board.
Yes. Uh, hello all, happy new year to everyone. Um, I've heard a lot of falsehoods being told and I haven't commented. But I, I, I feel compelled to comment at this point. All the culverts are on my property by hundreds of feet. This has been substantiated by, um, two surveys. Both filed with the county for decades. The wetlands, uh, were not destroyed for a reason or, uh, by any doings of anyone. Nature did it. DC investigated it, found that nature did it and heavy, heavy rains and flooding. Actually, a town resident, uh, someone very well regarded was there and watched it and saw, and took a video of it. I, I won't mention her name. She can stand forward if she wants to. So people think it seems that if they keep telling a story, eventually it becomes truth. It doesn't. The, the, all these accusations have been investigated by troopers, by the DC, by the town themselves, by the highway department. They've all come up false and lacking. Thank you very much for giving me the floor for a moment. Uh, I wish the new members of the board, uh, a great time as board members and, uh, happy new year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the gallery?
I see nobody raising their hand.
No, I am. I am going to move into old business, 3.1. The compensation schedule, uh, the following items to add to the 2020 schedule of fees. The attorney to the town as per contract in the attorney to the town justice court as a contract. I would make a motion to add those two.
One second.
All in favor? All right, opposed. 3.2 board appointments. The cleaner, James Agar in maintenance, uh, Tim Belushi, uh, were the only two that were not. Belushi, were the only two that were not put on. The others that you see on your schedule actually were.
An outstanding thing about the engineer. You were going to check with.
Yes, and I did that.
Okay.
Yes. Thank, I, I will though for the next. So I'd make a motion to add those two. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Number four, new business, four point one Sullivan Renaissance Grant.
Okay, so I, I touched on it in the grants report. I'd like the board approval to allow me to apply for two Renaissance Grants. One for technical assistance grant, which is two thousand five hundred dollars to hire a landscape architect to create a design for plantings along Kirk Road. And then the second one would be a community impact grant for twenty thousand dollars, which I will tell you, I think we have to have a twenty-five percent match, which we have budgeted in Parks and Rec, so that we could work with actually the certification group and work to get the landscape architect design implemented.
The first one's a pure grant, it's no matching.
I can't hear you.
The first one, there's no match. The second one, there is magic.
The first one's a pure grant.
Yes, correct.
No match.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Is there a criteria for how the landscape architect is chosen?
Chosen? No.
We have, we have several in town, so.
Oh, I didn't know that.
To locals.
A motion to.
I'll make that motion.
Allow the application for the technical assistance grant and for municipal partnership grants, purchase plans according to. I have a motion, a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? I opposed. Four point two are Sullivan County hazardous, hazardous mitigation. This is to fill for the county so that we can continue on with the hazardous mitigation plan, whereas the town of Tustin with the assistance from Albany Visualization and informatics labs has gathered information, prepared the Sullivan County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And whereas Sullivan County Hazard Mitigation Plan has been prepared in accordance with the Disaster Administration Act of two thousand. And whereas the town of Tustin is a local unit of government that has afforded the citizen an opportunity to comment and provide input in the plan and affirms that the plan, and whereas the town of Tustin has reviewed the plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years, be it resolved by town council. The town of Tustin adopts Sullivan County Hazard Mitigation Plan as the jurisdiction's natural hazard mitigation plan or is off to execute the actions in the plan. This was what was started back at last year.
I, I remember, but the town of Tustin has refuted and affirms the plan will be updated, and who's going to do that?
The county. Yeah, we're part, we're a little subdivision of the county.
Yeah, that's what.
Yes.
All right, I'll move that.
A second. I will second. Any questions, comments from the board? All in favor? I opposed. Four point three are Upper Delaware scenic byway contribution. A motion to make monetary contributions for Delaware scenic byway in an amount not to exceed one thousand dollars that has been budgeted already.
It's also the traditional amount that was given to years. I'll move that.
I will second. All in favor? I opposed. Jane, will you do number four? I'm just going to reduce the whole part of that.
Okay. I'd like a motion to reappoint Kathleen Johnson to the Board of Assessment Review for a five-year term from September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. Does everybody know what the Board of Assessment Review is?
Give me a hint.
Want to tell us, Ken?
Every year, every, every year, property owners have an opportunity to challenge.
This is the grievance. Yeah, okay.
You know what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, may I have a motion for that? A second?
I'll second.
Seven seconds. All those in favor? Um, recused.
I.
And opposed.
Thank you, Jane. Can you unmute Dave for me?
Hey, fun.
Yep.
Hey, Dave.
Hello.
Four point five, Dave, is the septic tank pumping and removal of used filter sand bid. Only one was received from Cobra Line. Base bid price for down to include three emergency calls at twenty-two cents per gallon. The surcharge price for call for emergency callouts over three, twenty-two cents per gallon. Labor hauling and disposal of the used filter sand, thirty-six dollars per yard. And that had the non collusion with it.
Dave, can you tell us, I think you've used Cobra Line in the past and been satisfied. Is that correct?
Yes, we have. That is a bit, that is an increase from the previous years. We were paying seventeen cents a gallon. Now it's twenty-two cents a gallon for pumping, just so everybody's aware of that.
This was the second bid that went out.
The second bid, I personally received nothing.
Right.
Have you checked around to other places? No, 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 I meant other, other towns. Are they paying about the same rate?
Yes, throughout the state, it's, it's similar, anywhere between twenty cents north New York, all the way down towards Rockland County, it's paying almost thirty cents.
Dave, do you think that the increase of five cents per gallon reflects the lack of competition or a rise in their prices and expenses?
I was just informed last week that Cobra Line's possibly being sold, and another company's taking over. And I believe that's the reason why we've gotten the increase.
Thank you.
Your recommendation to the board, Dave?
I accept the bid as proposed.
Any other questions of Dave? If not, I would make a motion to accept the twenty-twenty-two septic tank pumping removal disposal of used filter sand bid.
Did you make a motion?
I made the.
I'll second it.
All in favor? I opposed. Four point six, ninety-three Main Street, that's the bank, a discussion about starting some demolition on the interior.
We have a plan?
Well. We have a plan, and it needs to be emptied in order to do something.
What do you mean?
Per procurement on demolition. I mean, that's still got to go out to bids.
It doesn't, depending on dollar value you're talking about, with what you got to, you know, sealed bid, but you got to complete procurement policy, which would mean you'd have to get a certain number of quotes.
We've got to come up with a point of what we want done on the inside so that we can actually put this out and get it moving.
Right, that's what I'm driving at. What do we, I don't want to move to demo it, demo op, demolish it if we don't have a plan.
There's certain pieces in there that you know that regardless of.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So I think the building committee needs to go down and
Yes.
formulate a plan, plan to bring back to the board.
Yes.
That we can
Okay.
Have an idea at the next work session. Update the board on what we want to do and get it started.
Yes, I agree. Okay, so table that motion and tell the building committee of advices.
Yeah, and what we're going to do with some of the stuff that's inside, we need to come up with an idea, there's desks and file cabinets and we hold an auction.
You can, yeah, you, I mean, there are services you use.
The town trucks have been on auctions internationally.
Yeah, that's kind, that's commonly how it's done. You know, use equipment and vehicles.
So we need to identify the things we're not.
Identify it, you can publish it, just ask for, for people to submit their highest and best bid for it.
We'll table that.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be part of what we bring back to the board.
Yeah.
For the work session in February. Four point seven. COVID quarantine guidelines. Kind of Tustin follows the guidelines for COVID-nineteen quarantine for all its employees as per the policy of the Sullivan County Public Health. And whereas Sullivan County updates their policy, the town shall follow suit. And whereas at-home test kits will not be accepted, or any test submitted as proof of negative must come from a qualified provider. This is for the employees in the town of Tustin. Just at this point, when they are going to be out on exposure, or they're going to be out for a positive test, positive test needs to be one that needs to come from a healthcare.
Who's responsible for the payment?
Well, that's a good question, because if it's an exposure during work, it's going to be work-related, so the town will be responsible for it. So an exposure that's outside of work, and they're not going to come to work because of the positive test, that would be there.
Okay, because we did prove a couple of them.
Where you go testing, even if it's from qualified providers, some testing is free and some testing is covered by insurance also. So you may not be out of pocket or anything, nor would the employee.
Okay. I'll move that.
I will second that. Any discussion or questions? All in favor? I opposed. Four point eight, Tustin Youth Commission Appointment. A motion to appoint Ashley Ben Scotton to the Tustin Youth Commission.
She is, it is to note, she is not a Tustin resident, although in our bylaws, it says she could not have to be because we cannot seem to get enough parents within the town of Tustin. So she is a member of the town of Procheckin. Her children will not get any, can't pay for her children to go on events, and the children of Tustin. But her children, with other children in the general community, can participate in other events. And she is understanding of that, but would like to help and be a part of our.
Okay, I'll move that we appoint Ashley.
I'll second it.
All in favor? I oppose. Ken, we don't need a resolution for, for our assessor to do in persons. We wouldn't even really need one if he wanted to do it remotely or leave it the way it was.
Okay.
Very good.
Why don't you pop a comment before?
Yeah, you're gonna, yes. To that first. There will be an executive session this evening, so I am going to open the floor back up to public comment for doing that.
Nobody.
I think Brandy.
Hi, since you're going to start looking at the bank building, I was just wondering if you guys, who's on the building committee?
Who's on the building committee? Ben and myself.
Great. If, if you guys could consider doing the air source heat pump, the mini split would really save energy, and we have it in that building in the room you're sitting. It's been really efficient. Just for consideration, I could get you grant money most likely for that. That's it.
Who does it, Brandy?
Well, an electric, you know, a trician can come, put that in. They put it in the building you're sitting in. Just for your consideration, I just, it would be a really good way to save energy and a good opportunity since you're renovating.
Thank you, Brandy. Anybody else on there? Okay. If not, I would make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of matters leading to the appointment employment for motion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
I oppose. We stay here or?
Yeah, stay right there.
Randy's a former owner of a bank. She owns the bank in Hank, so she had to deal with a vault door. Yeah, no, that makes sense, but it's kind of interesting.
And that's essentially it. I mean, if we come out of executive session and make a motion. Not about it.
He says cheese beneath our mask.
Yeah.
Do you want masks on or masks off?
I think she's back.
And the, the meeting is essentially over. Executive session and make some sort of motion, which would then appear in the minutes.
Maybe back.
I want to get everybody close. But they're offline, right?
No, you hold on. I'm waiting for everyone to.
So they haven't hung up yet, those names?
No.
They're lurkers.
I put them in the waiting room. I don't just pick them out. They can choose for the waiting room themselves.
Can't sit where I can hear you.
Don't try your hearing aid, Jane.
I'll sit out here. Take my mask off and enunciate. How's that?
Okay. Greg's going to just let anybody know that outside that we're back in session.
Yep.
I was hoping you'd turn. And I got reprimanded by Councilman Gettle. He said, where's your book? So I.
Actually, Bruce. You know, the office vote was that Bruce was not going to bring his binder.
And he's the only one.
I am impressed. No, Greg did also.
Bring my homework book.
You guys, you got a little pap to write on.
Thank you.
Good to draw pictures on.
I told Bruce, I told Crystal I was reprimanded by Councilman Gettle.
I said, Jane, where's your homework book? I haven't brought some.
Look at you.
Just wanted to find, there's still quite a few people on.
Recording, and we're unmuted since.
And so Greg went to get anybody that's outside.
They keep playing. We'd still get about a dozen to a dozen and a half a day. Like I had a kerosene heater in there last night, but I was trying to run off-road diesel because I think kerosene. They huddle.
What are you, you're an R2?
Like, he's.
I'm residential commercial.
You can have chickens. I know, great frustrations in general residents.
Yeah, well, you know what?
The GR is the most restricted district.
Yeah, I know, with no chickens. I had duck, I had a Muscoby duck once. He lived on the pond. He wasn't really technical.
Okay. You're, you're alive. You, you gotta do. You have a new guest.
More books out again.
Hi. Um, you wanna ask any, and then if they want any comment? No, never mind.
Hey, Laura.
Yeah.
Uh, anything from the executive session? Are we going into closing items?
Uh, nothing, uh, to bring to the board at this time.
Okay, closing items, board comment?
Um, I just had one thing that I researched that it might be good to have in the record if with the increase in the water utilities, there is a program from the state called the LIHWAP which does offer, if people fall behind on their bills, it does offer with some income restrictions the opportunity to get money from the state to pay your water bill.
Just water or water and sewer?
Water and sewer. Uh, there are different limits. I think, uh, water is, uh, one-third and sewer is two-thirds of potential money that can be given.
If you can give me that link, I can put it on the water, on the, under our water.
You know, I was disappointed to learn, I'm disappointed in us because we said that we were gonna have a letter that went out with that water bill and we didn't.
They, they went out on what, two different times we put out the, in June and September, they had the new rates schedules were set out?
No, I, I agree, Jane. I mean, I wasn't on board, but just a, a something real simple, basically saying your, your bill's gonna go up.
Well, it was on the back of the bill.
We did.
It was, but.
I know, but you know what it was? The ad valorem, ad valorem tax explanation makes all the difference.
Right.
In the world.
Right.
And I talked to so many people, friends, neighbors, this, that. I said, you know, your bill's going up. They're like, what?
But actually, some didn't, some didn't. What, what they have to do is to actually look at their property tax bill. And you'll notice that there's not a water levy on your new tax bill. That went away.
Right.
Well, so they, but when you explain it to them, um, some people actually stayed the same with it a few dollars per quarter. Some people actually went up per quarter and some people actually went down per quarter, but they have to take that ad valorem tax and figure that in with what you paid, take all four quarters, um, I believe it the number it came up to, add to that the ad valorem tax divided by four, that's what their actual quarterly payments were. But yes, I.
I just think, you know, a little better advertising of the.
Well, it's been talked about a million times.
About. It's, it's a problem with all organizations. The people you're reaching are the people you're reaching. People you're not reaching, the ones who don't understand this, this stuff, who don't follow every board meeting, I'm just.
But they have, uh. The water department received quite a few, um, calls about it, and I think the, the clerks have done a good job in explaining it to them. Or at least people feel that they've done a good job explaining it.
Okay.
Any meeting reminders?
I don't usually have come, but I have so. So they were replying to fire protection on Cackle Town Road. I've been in the fire department for 37 years. We did have a structure fire on Cackle Town Road. That beaver pond was not adequate water source because of the mud bottom. We ended up damming the stream below the culverts, which you can do with any little trickle of water. We had adequate water source plus tanker relays down there. So that beaver pond was never an adequate fire protection water source, just so all you guys know.
Cyclers house.
Yep.
That was an enormous fire, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I remember that.
And we did, we ladder, made a ladder dam in the stream itself because you could not get any where's near that thing, that beaver pond. And when we did get a portable pump out into it, it plugged right up. So that, that's kind of fooly on that comment and so, uh, and that stream is still adequate to retain water out of. Because it only takes a tarp and a ladder and you've got one heck of a pond in there to draw it out. And then you don't have to deal with ice during the winter. That. And yes, the water pressure and hydrants down there stink, always has.
Yeah.
We cannot hook into a hydrant in town and really draft water because it'll collapse the pipe in anywhere.
No, we know, we know.
Oh, and that, that's, that's always been so to, to blame that on the hydrant and the beaver pond is a, a bunch of malarkey.
Make the dogs happy.
Yeah. I have one for.
Meeting reminders, our next work session will be the first Tuesday.
Just February 1 and then February 8, correct?
And I forget, uh, are they open to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
First Tuesday?
Yes.
At what time?
Six thirty.
I'm sure it's in the book.
Yeah, it is.
I almost printed you out, our Google Calendar. All the meetings on there. You can also go to our Google Calendar on our website.
Okay.
And you can add it to your, um, personal calendar.
All right. Oh, good, Google Calendar.
Crystal, why don't you make the announcement? What you told me is that there's a foul up in the, in the computer system.
Add it. Um, oh, um, so our meetings, Munich Code, I have to make time, it's, it's taxes and I have a stack of this, I'm gonna go upstairs and do some taxes. But I have to get a phone up, pull out to Munich Code, that is who holds our meeting, uh, website right now. And, um, Jane said, you know, your minutes aren't posted online, not working. And I said, I posted them there, they should be there. And I'm going back and looking and some spots where it shows that the meeting minutes are there, you click on it and it's an agenda or it's in a blank page.
Yeah.
And I was unaware of that. Um, until I think it was yesterday, the day before I went and I'm clicking through and a couple had it, a couple didn't. So I apologize. I do have all the minutes printed, um, if anyone, the public, anyone, I've been emailing them here and there. Um, so I will get on that as quick as possible. I've got the deputy working like crazy with taxes and everything else, so in between that, we'll get out to Munich Code and get that fixed.
Yeah.
The Zoom recordings, I'm trying to get those uploaded as poss, as quick as possible. We do have, there was a couple, we, I said, I just shut it off. Um, we have been doing audio recording since the past, this past fall for planning ZVA and for town board, so I, this way we have a backup. So we don't have issues before because every once in a while, our Zoom meetings, the conversion, it stops and it doesn't convert and it doesn't download. Um, so all those things, we are trying to at least get backups and.
I, but I like to see it on paper because I don't wanna listen to the whole thing all over.
But also.
And I, and I.
Audio and video up and I can get people out.
Yeah, and I was on Crystal's case and she said, but it is on, but it was the staff who, so it's not her fault.
This is a super low priority, um, and I'll send you a note on it, but the Association of Towns, which we're on for this training, has a link to every town. The link to Tustin has nice little things, but the town board is from 2004, still Charlie Knapp. It's still Lou Mackel.
They have the wrong website.
Oh, maybe that's it, whatever. I'll send you a note. It's, this is not a crucial.
I mean, that's kind of a big deal. We had an old, we had an old website.
Right, but it's, it's, you know, and, uh, somewhere on the, on our website, Kelly's extension is 1,007, which will get you to the court, no, whatever, it's either 1,007, 1,003. In the book, it's one, on the website, it's another. I'm just, I'll send you a note.
The Association of Towns book?
Huh? No, no, no. I'm talking. Homework book has a right extension.
Okay.
The, the website has a wrong extension.
Got it.
But I'll send you, I'll, I'll send you an email.
Where's my homework book? I have a cart.
I'm your.
Would you adjourn?
Oh, yeah, I moved that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Oh. Okay.
Hey, thank you for calling me back in.
Brad, did you come from below or?